Members of council, if I can please have you come to the council chambers. Members of council, if I can please have you take your seats. This meeting is now resumed. Okay, thank you. Councillor Cressy, I understand that you would like to address council.
Thank you, Speaker. I just wish to read a name, Jean-Vive Bergeron.
Councillor Perks.
Elaine Colgan.
Councillor Ford.
Natalie Croto.
Councillor Mehavik.
Barbara Diagnol.
Councillor Grimes.
Anne-Marie Edward.
Councillor Holliday.
Maude Haverniek.
Councillor Matlow. Councillor Pasternak.
Maurice Leclerc.
Mayor Torry.
Anne-Marie Lemay.
Councillor De Baermaker. Oh, sorry. Councillor Palazzo. Councillor Shiner. Councillor Hart.
Annie Turcot.
Councillor Layton.
Barbara Clushwick-Widowex.
Thank you. Oh, I thought it was Councillor Cressy, sorry, that's what I was told. Councillor Cressy.
Friends, 18 years ago, and you've just heard their names, 14 women were murdered in Montreal because they're women. Today, as a city, we remember those who we've lost over the years to violence against women, and we commit together, all of us, but especially us men, to ensuring that we never let it happen again. We wear the white ribbon, and I would like to acknowledge Kate from the White Ribbon Campaign here today. We wear the white ribbon today as men because we know that violence permeates our society every day, in every way. And at the most extreme form, it is deadly violence. But in our homes and our workplaces, through the Me Too movement that we've seen, we know that we all, every single one of us as men, can do more at all times to call out violence, always. Councillor Layton.
Thank you. Councillor Layton.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and colleagues. I woke up this morning, as many of you did, to the cries of my eldest daughter, Phoebe. She had a cold, so she woke up very early this morning, and I went to her. And she wanted my company for something as insignificant as that cold. And when I think about, and when I heard on the radio the names being read, it struck me of the world that I grew up in. A world where a man could walk into a school, separate the men from the women, and shoot and kill 14 daughters. And just how sad that makes me feel, and just how afraid, and just how ashamed as a man that that could happen. And all of the times that words were uttered, that inequality was done, and that I didn't do anything. I'm not going to let that happen ever again. I hope you'll join in with that, because for those 14 women, there are millions of women worldwide that are killed by their partners, who are supposed to be their loved ones, by their partners or by others because they're women. And there are billions of women in this world that are systemically and consistently treated differently because they're women. And we as men, and we as society, can do something about that, and we must. And on this day of remembrance and action against violence against women, let us reconfirm our commitment to ending that cycle. I just want to say one more thing, because the movement that's happened more recently has given us a cause for hope, because it shows the strength and bravery of women that is passed on. It's contagious. It goes to others to speak out. This is the Me Too movement. It's being recognized worldwide, most recently by Time Magazine, who have chosen to choose those brave women and show them as an example for what others could be. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Councillor Layton. Councillor Shiner, I understand you would like to make a brief announcement.
I would, something I hope that is a lot more cheerful than that, that is a very important issue, and I'm glad we could deal with that as a council. But my apologies to my colleagues, I couldn't be here yesterday morning for the beginning of the meeting as I was at the last meeting of Bill Toronto, our Board of Directors, and we couldn't shift it when the council date was added. So we went there. So I wanted to, one, talk about affordable housing on the agenda. There's 709 new units. There's zero affordable housing units with those, although there is a contribution on an application in Councillor Perks' area towards affordable rental housing in his board, which I commend him for doing. But I wanted to let you know, if I could, at the last meeting at the Board of Directors of Bill Toronto, that the comments that you had, it's almost, I think, two years back when my friend and colleague Councillor Layton rose with a letter from David Miller saying, "You're supposed to build 1,000 affordable housing units," and 10 were built, I think, at that time. And since then, we have done hundreds and hundreds of units. So yesterday, at our meeting, we have five sites in five different wards. And from those five sites, there is 340 affordable housing units going to be built on former city land. We've really turned the corner in what we're doing to bring forward redevelopment on old city sites, whether they're old quarries or contaminated lands up in the council, or Palazzo's area, which he's worked on for years, that old Reston Road in St. Clair, or out in Victoria Park, where we had, as I said, the old quarry or others. Five different sites. We are earning revenue on each of those, making a profit, and I think, as you might have noticed from Councillor Ajamary and coming out to an opening, we actually built a plaza, which is something unique in the city that we now are operating, and we'll actually be selling that, because we're not operators of plaza, but we've been able to earn money on it. So Build Toronto has come forward with the Board of Directors, that's there, with my colleagues, Councillor De Ciano and Councillor Thompson on the board, and really taken to heart that every application has to have affordable housing, has to have community benefits, has to have a buy-in from the community, shouldn't be appealed to the Chair of Municipal Board, should have good development on it, and they have done what I would say is a stellar job. But it was their last meeting, so on behalf of all of council, I thanked them there. But here, I would like to thank the board members, and I have to say that, and I can give you their names, because many of you may not know them, but Wayne Fraser, Michael Bernstein, Nancy Cohen, Dennis Fatinos, Peter Sharp, Moshe Wertham, Audrey Urbanhorst, were all fantastic members. And as I said, along with my colleagues, Councillor De Ciano and Councillor Thompson, we've done an absolutely, I think, stellar job there, and I look forward to that work being continued with the new members of the Board of the Toronto Realty Agency, and look for them trying to live up to the standards that have been set, the cooperation that's been worked with all of you. And I really just wanted to give a thank you to all of the members of the Board for their hard work and for all of your support as members of council on each and every application that you've worked on within the ward on old city land, because you've also been tremendous in trying to make sure that these sites came out to good uses and in a manner where people were satisfied with them all around. So my thank you to the Board and to all of you as members of council and to my colleagues on the Board.
Thank you. Councillor Shiner. Councillor McMahon.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Good morning, everyone. I just wanted to acknowledge great city staff, as usual, hard-working city staff, who received an award yesterday on behalf of the City of Toronto as Solar Developer of the Year.[1296.22][1296.22](Applause). So, Canadians, this is from the Canadian Solar Industries at their annual conference. So our renewable energy office within the Energy and Environment Department, in partnership with Toronto Hydro, has over 100 solar photovoltaic installations completed or under construction in and around the city, on roofs of our city buildings, in 40 wards, sorry, not everyone's ward, but we will get there, including the lovely Tadweverina in wonderful Ward 32 at Main and Gerard, is just getting their solar panels right now. And this reduces our greenhouse gases, as we know, by half a million kilograms a year, and $4 million in generated revenue. So it's a win-win, and there are more plans underway for more projects on solar farms on our parking lots and on other city land. And it's all part of our Transform TO goal and target for to produce 24 megawatts of renewable energy by 2020. And we all endorse that plan unanimously, and I know we're going to look forward to funding that in the budget. But I would just like our Office of Energy and Environment to stand up. Jim Baxter, Rob Maxwell, is anyone else here? Are they behind us? Oh, here, are you all behind us? The ward right there, here they are, stand up, be proud. Come on, come on.[1386.86][1386.86](Applause). Thank you. Toronto de Green.
Thank you. Councillor Bylaw.
Thank you. I'm going to be very brief, Madam Speaker, but I thought that after that speech from Councillor Shiner, I should acknowledge the work that Councillor Shiner has done as Chair of Build, and I know that he pushes hard the board, and he's always looking out for the affordable housing file. And also thank all the board members, but I know that there has been a huge shift, and he's absolutely right, even though in this agenda we do have funding for several supportive housing and funding for some affordable ownership homes, we need to see more of the applications coming forward with already inclusion, with the affordable housing included in it. So I know that Councillor Shiner, every meeting as Chair of Planning calls out our attention for that, but, and it is important, we need to do, all of us, a better job. And of course, the, once the legislation is passed for inclusionary zoning, that will give us a lot more leverage to work with that. But I just wanted to get up and acknowledge the work that Councillor Shiner has done as Chair of Build, and thank him for all the hard work, and thank all the board members here, our colleagues as well that sit on that board, because it's made a tremendous difference in the last few years, what we've done by using our land and leverage our land to create more affordability in our city.
Thank you. Members of council, we will now review and confirm the order paper. To this point, council has completed 106 items. There are 73 items left on the agenda, plus 36 member motions. Council has decided to consider the following items as the first items of business this morning. CD 24.7 on the 2018 Shelter Infrastructure Plan and Progress Report, and AU 10.7 on the 2018 Audit Work Plan, and GM 23.16 on the expropriation of 1269 Danforth Road Scarborough subway extension. City council will consider item EX 29.36 at 2:00 p.m. That item will be followed by member motions. Member City Council had previously decided to consider item EX 29.10 on enhanced security measures at Toronto City Hall as the third item of business yesterday, but did not begin that debate. Council will deal with that item later in the meeting. I would now take the release of member holds. Councillor Kergianis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this point, I would like to release on page number three, PW 24.4, Improving Accountability Utility Cut Process. My answers, my questions have been answered by staff, thank you.
I'm sorry, what page?
Page three.
Page three.
Don't you have a motion?
No, this one. No, no.
PD, PW.
24.4.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear you.
24.4, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'm sorry, didn't hear you. Okay. You're releasing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. On page three, PW 24.4. Yes, Councillor Shiner.
Are we adopting the recommendations in the supplementary report or not?
Some of you will have to move it.
So I don't know whose ward it is. Oh, the utility cut. So let's hold it down, because...
Okay, so it's not a quick item. Councillor Pasternak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm moving this on behalf of Councillor Carmichael Greb. If the clerk can put this, it's a reopening of NY 26.4. Reopening. It's a reopening. If you can find the pager. I'm doing it on behalf of my colleague, if you'd...
Okay, so, so what is the item, Councillor Pasternak?
You know, I'm going to pass this on. I was asked by the clerk to move it.
All right. Councillor Carmichael Greb.
Thank you. I would like to reopen from yesterday's paper, page 12, NY 26.4, Request for Direction Report. There has been more information, and Councillor Shiner was not here yesterday morning, it's his item, and he cannot reopen it.
Okay, and that's for 625, 627 Shepherd, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, on favor of reopening? Carried. So that will be added on. Councillor Shiner.
Yes, Madam Speaker, page six, GM 23.17, expropriation of 13 Barbary Place and 23 Barbary Place for New East West Road. I can release that? My apologies, page six.
Okay, page six, at the bottom of the page on the blue sheet, GM 2317, Councillor Shiner is releasing.
Councillor Moncton, please. Councillor Kelly.
The item is adopted 35 to 1. Councillor Shiner. Councillor Shiner.
Madam Speaker, I had also held on page eight, Planning and Growth, item 24.12, Request for Directions on the Official Plan Amendment 2PA. That's Policies to Implement a Development Permit System. I don't know if any members of council have any issues on it or not. So if they do, just advance, maybe we can work that out.
Okay. Thank you. All those... All those in favor of adopting the order paper, recorded.
Councillor Perks and councillor Davis, please, on the order paper.
Councillor Mayhavich, please.
The motion to adopt the order paper carries unanimously, 36 in favor.
So we will now go to page six, CD 24.7, 2018 Shelter Infrastructure Plan and Progress Report. Do we have questions, the staff? Any questions? No? Oh, okay. Councillor Cressy.
Thank you, and I won't belabor it, just some questions, and I'll direct it to the, our GM of SSHA, Mr. Aftus. So the vacancy rate, our council prescribed vacancy rate is 90%, which we are currently exceeding, correct?
That's correct.
All right. So we are currently around 96% from our previous conversations?
Yeah, last night we were at 95%.
95% last night. So explain to me, and so we have been seeking to increase capacity, meanwhile, the, our occupancy rate has not been going down. What do we attribute that to? Is that rising inequality? Is that a regional issue? Where is this, why are we not able to deal with the increasing occupancy numbers?
Through the speaker. So as I look back over the last couple of years, we have been sitting around that 95% occupancy. We started to see a fairly sharp upturn in the demands in the system. And the first piece of that was a refugee inflow. So that increased from about 10% back in 2016 to about 25% in 2017. Also, we've seen an increase in demand in other sectors, women, men, coed. And that appears to be related to affordability, the low vacancy rate, available units out in the community, and also the growing city and the growing GTA.
So, I mean, a variety of factors. So I heard there, so general affordability issues related to inequality, related to the housing market, some pressures in some of the specific areas related to global instability and an influx of refugees. But, so, given that demand is increasing and we're having a hard time dropping the occupancy rate, from your assessment, how many new permanent beds do we need this year and next year so that we are not overcapacity?
Through the chair. So I think that's a very difficult number to estimate. Since I started in the program, we've added about 1,000 beds into the system. Over the last 12 months or 14 months, it's about, actually, 1,400 beds. And we did that fairly aggressively. We overspent our budget this year by $10 million doing that. And we thought that while we were doing that, the occupancy level would decrease. We have not seen that reduction. So with that in mind, we have been developing a plan to increase the capacity. But I can't give you a fixed number that would bring that down. It will depend on the affordability issues, the vacancy rate, the instability that you had talked about globally, all of those pieces together. In previous years, we've seen this a couple of times, and we did see those numbers go back down. But it is very hard to predict going forward.
So some of the, in, at CDR, we talked about 1,000 beds in the near future and 400 beds this year. That's been a number that has been discussed a lot. What, can you break down, where does that number come from? The need for 400 this year and 1,000 next year?
Through the chair. So the numbers that were discussed at CDR, those did not come from SSHA. In terms of the number of 400 beds, I was asked to take a look at what is possible in the coming number of weeks, to see, are we able to, in a reasonably quick way, increase some capacity in the system to deal with the increase in demand? And so we had gone away as a team and prioritized what we would be able to do quickly. And, you know, we believe that we can respond to 400 beds.
And so those are 400 beds, not drop-in sites?
Apologies, apologies. 300 of those were beds, an approach to beds. And there was also an option of opening up a sixth winter respite site. We are, we are opening five this season, and one of those options was a sixth.
So of the, that you've identified the potential to have 400 additional spaces, I will then say, this year, we'd be talking about 300 beds and 100 through a new drop-in. Those 300 beds, where will they be?
So the immediate options would be motels, and then spaces within the 62 shelter, shelters that are out in the system. We had just worked through a third-party consultant to do a space audit to understand available space out in the shelter system. And so we would be working with providers within those shelter standards to identify some immediate spaces to utilize.
Councillor Cressy, that was your last question. I know, I forgot to put your timer on.
Oh.
Okay. So that was your last question. Councillor Pasternak?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you to staff. Several staff reports refer to the figure of 5,000 as the number of people who need immediate or temporary shelter, the homeless, let's say, on any given night during peak season in Toronto. Does that figure sound correct?
In 2013, through the speaker, we do have a count that identifies approximately 5,000 homeless individuals on any given night, as well as approximately 500 individuals sleeping rough.
So if you add up all the various shelter and drop-in and sleeping opportunities throughout the city, the figure seems to come to 5,651. Does that, does that figure sound correct?
Through the chair. So in terms of our actual capacity last night in the system, the capacity we had was 5,651. Those were beds within the system, along with the 24-hour winter respite sites, which is on top of that. But the occupancy, the people who were in the shelter system last night was 5,382.
So just for clarity's sake, there's a lot of talk about the armories. Most people don't know what they are, or where they are, or how to access them. In 30 seconds, could you, could you just summarize what's problematic about using the armories to solve our homelessness crisis?
Through the chair. So I think, to be clear, the armories has always been an option. The city has used it in the past. However, it is, it would not be the number one option to move forward. There are a few reasons for this, operationally and also from a real estate perspective. From an operational perspective, it is an active military installation. So there are security challenges associated with that location that other locations maybe do not have. There is an active workforce at those facilities. Operational challenges are the mixing of the actual workforce with our clients in the day-to-day operation. And then there are also some cost considerations. So as we look back to 2004, the per diem per space at the armories was $208 per space. And our per diem today would be about $105. The Department of Defense was also charging a rent of about $4,200 a day for the use of that facility.
Okay. When, when someone arrives at, at a shelter or a drop-in, let's say a shelter for overnight stay, and there is no room at that specific location, what is the responsibility of staff at that, at that point? Do they know where there's capacity at a nearby shelter? Do they just say goodbye and good luck? What, what is the plan? What is our policy?
So there are, there are policies and procedures in place. Staff, both in the purchase of services, as well as in the city-operated shelters, are to look for an available space for the individual within the system, and then provide them the opportunity to get to that available space. And if there wasn't an available location within the system, then they would be referred to Peter Street, the respite center on Peter Street.
Okay. So it seems that our, our shelter system is under a number of different strains. I mean, one is federal immigration policy, or our immigration system, where new arrivals, newcomers are unable to find adequate shelter, an asylum problem from south of the border, and the chaotic immigration policy that's emerging out of the United States. Can, can we cite those two issues, as well as, as well as, I guess, rising expense of housing and shelter, as, as factors for why we're under such strain?
Through the speaker, I would agree that some of that is, is a contributing factor, yes.
Okay. One, one last question. George Street revitalization. In order to fix something, you have to tear it down and rebuild it. My numbers indicate that you've got about 800, got about 800 displaced residents on, at Seton House.
That was your last question?
Yes, we do.
Councillor Mamalidi.
So is this an emergency?
Through the speaker, I would say it is an urgent situation.
Then, then, then why have the province not declared it as such? And why haven't we declared it as such? Aren't, isn't there money at our disposal once the province, or the municipality, or the federal government declares something an emergency?
So the effect of declaring something an emergency under our bylaw, which is a power given to the mayor, is to give the mayor all the powers of city council in order to address the emergency, and also to give those powers to a control group, which is a small group of city staff, and also includes the mayor and the deputy mayor. The, the reason this power is given to a small group of people to deal with outside of the council process is that an emergency is, is not just an important and urgent issue, which clearly this one is, but the definition of emergency includes matters which, which are things like natural disasters, disease, accidents, things that need to be dealt with so quickly that they really can't be dealt with through the council process. They're not long-term systemic social and economic problems, per se.
So, so individuals that are homeless and don't have a place to go are not considered an emergency under our definition?
The definition does not include long-term systemic and economic problems, even though they may be urgent and very, very important.
Then why, then why is everybody saying it's an emergency?
Like, like many terms, there's the, the way a word is used commonly in everyday language, and the way a word is defined in a statute. So what I'm advising you is how it's defined in the statute and the bylaw.
So, so, much of this is, is really about, what's happening, I think, is really about the influx of individuals that seem to be moving into the city of Toronto? How many of, how many of our homeless people actually have come from other municipalities around the GTA? Do we do a count?
Through the chair, we don't, we do not have data that would tell us that.
Would it be safe to say that a good chunk of them do? And the city of Toronto's part of the taxpayer equation is having to deal with other municipalities and their social issues, and, and their inability to be able to deal with, with some of this stuff?
Through the chair, I would say that Toronto does receive a disproportionate share for certain. The GTA is a very large community. Toronto provides twice the amount of service of all of the GTA communities combined.
Then how come we don't do a count of who actually comes from the city of Toronto, and those that choose to use city Toronto for its, its resources? Why, why aren't we doing a count of that?
Through the chair. So the organization doesn't have great data analytics. We are currently, currently working with the Toronto Alliance on Homelessness to identify how we can move forward and improve on those things. As we move into 2018, we're actually going to do a formal count.
What's the cost per hotel room or motel room that we're, we're, we're paying out? And I, and I say that, and I'll speak to why I'm saying that later, but, but what is the cost per hotel room or motel room every time we rent one out in the city of Toronto for this cause?
Through the chair, the total cost is about $105. That includes the space, but also the programming and support, and things like food and other things.
So it's really about $3, $3,500 a month?
Through the chair, I'm sorry, I don't understand the, you mean for an individual one?
Yes.
Yeah, so it would be times however many days in that month.
So for every, for every homeless person, the city of Toronto currently is spending about $3,500 a month on that individual, in, in trying to deal with, with shelter?
Through the chair, sounds like about the right number.
And, and aren't there other forms of shelter that are cheaper than that, that are more comfortable for individuals like this, if we were to build it?
That was your last question?
Through the chair, there, they, these motel rooms are considered a temporary solution in terms of moving towards building a new facility. It is more expensive on a per-day basis, but you have to factor in, you would not have the staffing, and you don't have the infrastructure costs that the city would be carrying also.
Thank you. Councillor Leighton?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Can I clarify the, the actual number of shelter spaces that are available as of today? How many shelter beds are available in total?
Through the chair. So last night in the system, we're reporting a capacity of 5,651.
5,651. How many of those were motel beds?
Through the chair, there would be approximately 1,300.
So 1,300 of 5, 6, 5,600 total?
Correct.
Let's go back two years, to 2015. I know you know these numbers, because I think you gave them in a previous answer. In 2015, how many, how many shelter beds were there?
We had approximately 4,280 shelter beds in 2015, 370 of which would have been motels.
So we've had an increase in the number of shelter beds, and a very dramatic increase in the number of, of what we're utilizing in motels?
That's correct.
So how many, how many real shelter beds were there that, that the city funded or operated? How, how many have changed since 2015?
Through the chair. So as stated, we're around 1,000 motel beds and around 300 and, 300 or so shelter beds.
So the, the total number, though, of city-funded or, or run beds in 2015 was 4,280 minus 370, right?
Correct.
So that's 3, 3,900, or something thereabouts.
Correct, approximately, yes.
And now it's 5,600, and you subtract?
1,300.
1,300, right? So we've, in, in two years, we've gone up by how many permanent beds?
Between 3 and 400, I, I'm not doing the math... Between 3 and 400. I, I'm not doing the math in my head, but it's approximate, between 3 and 400.
Something thereabouts.
Correct.
How much time and staff resources does it take to, to open a shelter bed? Have you done that analysis?
Through the chair, in the past couple of years, it has been challenging. It's been about 18 months to open a shelter, but that has included the time to find locations and a very exhaustive process of trying to get approval for that.
What about drop-in centers, 24-hour drop-in centers? We, we have two now. How easy was it to identify and open those spaces?
Through the chair, it was challenging. However, my team, along with many others from Josie Sholi's team, did an excellent job of finding five sites within the last couple of months.
How are those, how are the existing programs doing? Are they at capacity, over capacity?
Through the chair, the existing programs are doing well and, yes, they are approaching capacity. The fifth site is not open yet. That will be opening on December 15th.
So we've seen at, at one site in the 24-hour drop-in in my ward, a consistently above capacity on any given night. I'm just wondering why, given that we've opened up these other centers, why we haven't seen a decrease in that usage?
Through the chair, there would be, it's difficult to say. They are, it's a, it's a different program than the shelter program. There definitely is a need for that in the community and that's why we're responding in this way.
So I'm reading through the motion that was circulated earlier, and while I see there's space to support, or there's a recommendation to support new 24-hour drop-ins, I don't see any request to support existing programs that are currently running over capacity. Is, am I missing something? Like, maybe it's in here, we were just delivered it and it's quite lengthy. Am I missing something that council is being, instructing you to go and provide resources, additional resources to existing drop-in, or is that not in this?
Through the chair, the idea is to open up more capacity to take some of the pressure off existing capacity.
Okay, that was your last question. Thank you. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This morning on, I heard my colleague Counselor Bilal on the radio, she sounded very good, by the way, and she pointed out that an increasing number of shelter occupants or shelter users are staying for extended stays in the shelters, eight months, nine months and a year. Can you, can you outline for us the extent of that problem and, and sort of like the, what that, how that affects the capacity of the shelters?
Through the chair. So in terms of reviewing the existing data, which I would say is, is insufficient, what I can tell you is about 60% of our bed nights are used up by about 10% of our clients because of long-term stays in the shelter system. And this would be related to the lack of, the availability of supportive housing out in the community to be able to move some of those individuals out into the system. It is important to note that we see about 16,000 people through the shelter system every year and 2/3rds of those individuals, we see them once. They get the assistance and support that they need and they move back off into, you know, employment and the private market housing.
Okay, that, okay. So we, you said 60% of the bed nights are occupied by 10% of, of the residents, of the, of the people. Do, what's the situation in other neighboring municipalities and have, is, is there a possibility for us to work with other municipalities to provide space for people, comfortable shelter space for people?
Through the chair, we do not have shared data to understand what their length of stay is. We do know that in our neighboring municipalities in the GTA that Toronto provides twice the number or amount of service as all of the communities combined.
I, I heard you say that earlier. So, so is this, are other municipalities facing the same crunch that we are? Are they under pressure? Is Mississauga under pressure? Is, you know, Vaughan or Brampton or, or Durham? Are these other, are these other areas under similar pressures or no?
Through the chair, we know that nationally homelessness is a very significant issue and there, so in all of the communities, they're receiving pressure.
Okay, but, but we don't really know if neighborhood, if neighbor, if, if municipalities that border Toronto might have capacity to provide assistance for people who are currently in Toronto?
That's correct. We don't know that.
Is that, would, would that be something worthwhile exploring to see? Because I, I mean, if you're, if you're homeless, what you want is you want a clean, comfortable place to stay. And although your preference would be in your neighborhood of, you know, where you're living, you might be, you might be willing to go to another, another locale.
Through the chair, yes, I think that is worthwhile.
Okay. That's all my questions, Madam Speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just want to ask a few questions on the, the motels. We've had a few questions on that. So just to correct me, I think Counselor Leighton, you mentioned with Counselor Leighton, there's 1,300 motel rooms that we're utilizing presently across the city?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay. And, and what was that, just to correct, what was that like five years ago? It's, it's been steadily increasing?
Through the chair, I do not have data from five years ago. I know that in 2015 there were 370 motel beds.
Okay, so it's definitely increasing. Now whereabouts in the city would these motels or these rooms be located? I mean, generally, is it all over the place or just give me a sense of where they would be?
Through the chair, there would be a variety of locations.
Okay, all across the city. Now, when you're looking at determining who's going to be utilizing these spaces, is there, what sort of process do you go through compared to motel or some of the other shelters in, in the city? How do you determine who would be utilizing a motel?
Through the chair, I would say the majority of the time with the motels, 75%, are utilized in the family sector. They tend to work well for the families. But then we also use our caseworkers to identify opportunities for good spaces for individuals.
So you'd, you'd probably, I don't, there's not specific numbers, I get that, but you're probably looking more families, more women with children, that kind of scenario?
Through the chair, traditionally. However, we're looking for other opportunities to utilize on a short-term basis, the motel beds also.
Okay. Now with regard to a little more specifics, my ward and I think a number of wards out in Scarborough along Kingston Road, there are quite a few motels. So can you let me know, I mean, where we are presently? Do we utilize a lot of, there's a lot of motels out there and there's a, I think, a misconception that we're using a lot of these motel rooms for, for shelters. So can you maybe describe how we utilize the motels along the Kingston Strip, if you have some of that information?
Through the chair, we have three primary large programs and then we would have a number of other smaller programs, but I wouldn't say that we use them, that we use, you know, many, many across the city.
Okay. So, and, and if, with the increase that we're anticipating, I think the 400 was the, the number that had popped up, would we be utilizing more motel rooms out in this Kingston Road area or is it too difficult to really answer that at this point?
Through the chair, we would not be able to answer that question at this time. If this plan was approved by council, then staff would go away and identify appropriate sites.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Burnside?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you to staff. I know we spoke about, or you answered questions about the number of refugees. Do we have a percentage of the users of the shelters who are refugees?
Through the chair, it's approximately 25%.
And has that gone up in the last two years?
Through the chair, yes, it has. Early in 2016, we would be around 10% and today we're around 25%.
Okay. So since the photo ops with the federal government, what sort of follow-up has there been in terms of helping us with the situation financially?
Through the chair, there's no specific funding in the shelter system related to this, that specific issue.
So the answer is zero?
I think you got that, yes. That's correct.
Thank you. Okay. And we were talking about other GTA municipalities. You mentioned that they're facing pressure. Is it the same amount of pressure or are you able to judge that?
Through the chair, that would be difficult to quantify. I do believe that the GTA has similar affordability pressures. I do not know the vacancy pressures there.
No, so no idea whatsoever?
Through the chair, I wouldn't say no idea, but I would, I believe that there is receiving pressure.
Would it be less than Toronto?
Through the chair, I wouldn't be able to.
Okay, that's fine. Thanks. Around the 1999, when we amalgamated, the, the province set up a pooling fund, did they not?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay. And that was in recognition that Toronto, I'm asking, was that in recognition of the fact that Toronto generally received more people in need from other municipalities than we were providing the bulk of the service, which we've already actually heard, by the way?
That's correct.
Okay. So there's that recognition. And how much was that in, let's say 2000, the last year that we had it, what year, how much was that?
Through the chair, I'll, I'll have to get that number and get back.
If I were to suggest it was somewhere between 120 and 140 million dollars, would that be accurate?
Yes, it would be roughly 130 million, going by recollection only.
Thank you. So 130 million. And do we still get those funds?
No, that's been phased out.
Okay. Do we know why it was phased out? Was a reason given?
It was part of a realignment of a number of services uploading to the province and it was felt that it wasn't required at the time.
So has, and this may not be to you, but has the situation in terms of the, the number of people coming to Toronto, has something in a material way changed in terms of the services we're, we're offering vis-à-vis other municipalities? Or the number of homelessness, homeless people, has that actually gone down that would then justify this pulling of 130 million dollars from the pooling fund?
So through the chair, I don't think there has been a fundamental change. Other than in the last 18 months, we've seen a very significant increase in demand.
Okay, so it hasn't, up to the last 18 months, it hadn't gone down, but since in the last 18 months, the, the situation's actually gotten worse. Is that correct?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay. And for 130 million dollars, let's, let's even forget the last two years of inflation, what could we provide in terms of services?
The armories.
Through the chair, we would be able to provide a very substantial amount of services.
Let's just say beds. How many beds?
Through the chair, I'd have to get back to you on a calculation on that.
Well, if 400 beds are, are 10 million, I, if you multiply that by 13, would that be, not be 5,200?
Through the chair, it's more complicated than that. You have to consider the infrastructure costs, development, all of those pieces. If you're just talking about straightforward operations, it costs about $4 million to operate a 100-bed shelter. So, and to, that would be 3,000 beds?
3,200, 3,250, I think, somewhere in that range.
Off the top of my head, through the chair.
Okay. And I have one last question. Have we, what efforts have been made, have we made to reengage the province in terms of the pooling fund?
That was your last question?
Pooling fund? Certainly, that could be a request. And I just want to clarify in response to a question, the number was actually 150 million instead of 130, 150.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Matlow?
Madam Speaker, I'm, I want to clarify the question around the armories. As we're hearing from activists and service providers and people living on our streets who are demanding that we approach the government and we, we figure that out, as, you know, mayors and councils have done before us. And I've heard today that there are significant concerns and sincere concerns from staff about going in that direction. But what, what due diligence have we done to engage the government of Canada to, I've heard the problems, but has there any work been done recently to try to resolve those problems so that we can open up their armories and, and support the requests that we're hearing?
So through you, Madam Speaker, so we have engaged with the Department of National Defence to look at the possibility of, of taking on the space, but as my colleague mentioned, there are significant operational issues associated with it. We've been focused primarily on looking at the options as far as city-owned spaces concerned, and we've done a wide outreach of all the city divisions as well as the agencies that hold property, operational responsibility for property.
Would you, would you tell me more about the due diligence that, that you've done? So you, you say that you've engaged the government, defence. Have you had meetings like recently, in the last couple of weeks? Like, what, what have you done?
So through you, Madam Speaker, so there was outreach very recently, within the last couple of days. I await a response.
So, so the outreach has, has happened in the last two days?
Correct.
And not be, nothing before the last two days?
So as I mentioned, our focus has been on city-owned spaces?
This, I'm just, I'm confused about something, though. For, for a long time now, we've been hearing from people who, 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 who work with our shelters, who are actively advocating on behalf of our homeless, asking us to engage the government of Canada on the armories. And you're saying that we've only reached out to them in the last two days and now we've already come to the conclusion that it won't work. Could you, could you expand on your, your rationale and your answer?
So just to comment on the real estate aspects. So we, as I mentioned, we've been working for several months with our colleagues from SSHA in terms of identification of space. Based on the fact that their, the, the armories aren't suitable operationally, we've been focused on other options.
But if you've only, with all due respect, if you've only reached out to the government in, in the last two days, and I, I, I imagine that there hasn't been, I mean, unless, unless I'm wrong, you know, a, a lot of conversation or meetings over, or, you know, how, how can you conclusively say that the armories won't work? I understand that you already, you have reservations, you have concerns, they may well be substantive, but, but I'm asking more about due diligence to, given that there's such a demand from people who care so deeply and strongly believe that it is the answer, would it not be reasonable to demonstrate to them either it can happen or conclusively it can't and we've done the due diligence? And I just haven't, I haven't seen that yet.
So through the chair, the armories is always an option. It has been used in the past. Staff brought forward a report to CDNR back in June that went forward to the July council. Staff were authorized and directed to find five winter respite sites. We worked with our colleagues in real estate and other colleagues in the city to identify and find those five sites. We did that successfully. Those sites were deemed to be more appropriate because they're vacant, did not have existing workforces in them, did not have the security issues, did not have the cost associated with them, which is why we moved forward with those five sites. Now that we are, have opened four of them and one is coming online, we've identified that there continues to be that demand and we continue to look at other options.
So in conclusion, is it, is it fair to say, based on the answers that I've heard from both of you, that while you've done, you're doing your due diligence with city-owned sites and other sites, you've also said that the armories are always an option? Would you be willing to, given that you've said it is, it is an option, to do genuine due diligence, to be able to conclusively determine, even to look at your concerns, which may be valid, I'm not questioning them, but look at those concerns with, with defence and arrive at, at a, at a conclusion that you can share with the community and council about whether or not it really can or cannot be?
Okay, that, that was your last question?
Through the chair, that is exactly what staff have done. So when we opened the respite sites in November and realized that basically upon day one of opening, they're, they were at capacity, we started looking at other options. of opening, they were at capacity, we started looking at other options, and staff have reached out to the Department of Defence, and will continue to do that work. We will continue to do that work, but we understand the challenge is there, so that is not the only option we are looking at.
Thank you. Counselor Reinslie.
Thank you, through you, Madam Speaker. So currently, the capacity of the shelters, it's 96%. That's the number I keep seeing in reports and in the media.
Through the chair, last, it floats between 95 and 96%. Last night it was 95%.
Sorry, last night it was 95%?
95%.
Okay. And what's the city standard? Do we have a standard or, you know, a goal, we say, you know, this is the maximum of capacity that we would like our shelters at, so they can be properly run and staffed?
Through the chair, that's 90%.
So the city standard's 90%?
That's correct.
And if I looked over the past year, past 365 days, do we have any idea of how often we exceeded the 90%?
Through the chair, every day.
Every day, okay. And then, so we recently put in a process for shelters, and they're going to be smaller in size and spread throughout the city. Is there a goal of one shelter per ward, or is that what's ultimately going to be seen as a system need?
Through the chair, we would not identify operational sites based on one per ward. We would identify operational sites based on assessment of different areas of the city. The idea is to identify the need and build operational sites in those needs, or in those areas of need.
Okay. And then, how many people are currently estimated to be living on the streets in Toronto?
Through the chair, we did a count back in 2013, and there was approximately 5,000 homeless individuals at that time using, at that time in Toronto, 500 of which were sleeping rough. Last night, in the shelter system, there were 382 individuals in the shelter system.
Okay. And then, when it comes to collecting that data, we started, there's more robust data collection system that was put in place as of last January 1st, correct?
Through the chair, we do have an existing Shelter Management Information System, and staff are working to dramatically improve that in the coming months and years.
Okay. And that also includes, so the collection of data on the people that are considered homeless in Toronto. We've had a concern lately where the number of homeless deaths in Toronto seem to be increasing.
Through the chair, the collection of that data, that's correct.
Okay. And that includes gender, Aboriginal identity, cause of death, location of death, and relevant circumstances, correct?
Through the chair, that, yes, that's correct.
Okay. And are we releasing that data as open data sets on the Toronto Open Data Portal?
Through the chair, Toronto Public Health is releasing that data.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Holliday.
Thank you, Speaker. Through you to staff, I just wondered, how do we keep track of people that come in and out of the shelter system?
Through the chair, at intake, when people come into the shelter system, they're entered into the Shelter Information Management System.
And how is that done? Do they have a client number? Do they go by name? Is there some unique identifier that we assign to a person to help us keep track of that individual and their history with us?
Through the chair, individuals are assigned a number in the Shelter Information Management System, although there is a voluntary aspect to that system also.
Yeah, I understand, we've got some policies here, particularly about the provision of services without identity or documentation. In your estimation, do you find that the vast, vast majority of people are positively identified and positively matched with records in the system? Or do we have some gaps here? I know, we've been talking a lot about data, and I just want to understand how confident we are in the data about doing that match.
Through the chair, I would say that I'm not 100% confident in the data, and that's why we are working with Toronto Alliance and Homelessness to talk about how we could improve that data collection.
Okay. Any ideas coming forward that, I don't know, biometrics or some way so that you don't have to ask somebody to carry an identity card? And understanding that somebody may refuse to identify themselves, those are the rules that we have, but I'd like to see if there's a way to make it easier for clients to help us help them by keeping track of where they came from and where they're going so that we can have a better system.
Through the chair, so this is a very sensitive and important issue. We're looking at what other communities have done, but I think it's very, very important to engage the Toronto Alliance and Homelessness and to better understand how we could do that, given the sensitive nature of the issue.
Okay. I'm interested a little bit about the rules and how it works. If an individual, and I understand the families, you mentioned 75% of motel rooms are directed towards families and units of people together, but when an individual comes, are they, do they move into a shelter? Do they bring their belongings? Do they leave the belongings overnight and during the day? Essentially move into a space, and you talked about 10% of clients stay on long term? Or do they kind of check out each night? They have to gather their belongings, they have to leave, and then go back through an intake process? How does it work?
Through the chair, so the vast majority of people would move in. There are people, though, who would come in for an individual night and leave. There would be a variety of things there.
Okay. For the people that, the vast majority that essentially move in for a period of time until they find a more stable form of housing, are there rules about them able to leave the shelter? Let's say to stay with a friend that night, or with a companion, or maybe go out of town? What happens to their shelter bed if they're not there that night? And are there processes around those that stay every night versus those that sort of come and go and leave their belongings?
Through the chair, so there's a variety of processes. In very specific programming, there are situations where an individual would say go to the hospital, and there would be specific follow-up associated with that, and they would not move out of that shelter bed.
Of course. But what about people that voluntarily choose to go elsewhere for one night? You know, they go out of town with some friends.
Again, there could be a specific case management reason, so trying to reintegrate, just as an example, a youth with their family to move them out of the shelter system. You may allow that youth to go and stay with their parents for a night, and, you know, hold that shelter bed for them to come back in the morning so that the caseworker can try and get them reintegrated with their family member.
Right, or a spouse, or a partner, anybody else that is going through a difficult period. There may be reasons they want to go. But is it fair to say that the vast, vast majority of shelter users are people that are there every night, each night in their beds? Or do we have a fair amount of these gaps where people come and go and leave empty spaces?
That was your last question.
Through the chair, so as identified earlier, there are long-term stayers in the system. We see about 16,000 individuals go through the shelter system every year, and 2/3 of those come through once for a short period of time, average of about three months. They're reintegrated, and we don't see them again.
Thank you. Counselor Torsey.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Can the staff confirm or agree that there is an increasing number of women who require shelters?
Through the chair, anecdotally, I would say that is true. I don't have data in front of me to support that, but I would say anecdotally, yes.
What is the current capacity within women's existing shelters or occupancy rate?
Through the chair, so last night, in the two areas, it was 99 and 96%.
And would you know the capacity of women-only drop-ins, like sistering?
Through the chair, the women's-only drop-ins are full.
So you're to find 300 beds, any women only?
Through the chair, we would be looking to, so in terms of the motion itself, we would be looking to have the fifth winter drop-in site as women only. And of course, with the other beds would be a combination of men and women.
Right. And next year, you said you were opening three new shelters, one year in advance. Will any be accommodating women?
Through the chair, so we have not, we haven't broken that out just yet, but yes, we would identify shelter beds in a variety of areas.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Perks.
Thank you very much, Speaker. I'd like to start by asking a couple of questions to refresh my memory on some points. The idea for a 24-hour women's drop-in, did that originate with community activists and people with lived experience, or with city staff?
Through the chair, that definitely was with community activists. We opened up 35 spaces recently at Adelaide Street, as well as 30 other spaces out at Homes First within the last couple of months.
Similarly, the idea for the 90% shelter occupancy standard, did that originate with community activists, or was it originally a proposal from city staff?
Through the chair, I don't have the history on that. It's more than 20 years old, I would think, but I don't have an answer for you on that.
Okay. And finally, the impetus for creating respite and warming centers, did that idea originate with community activists or with city staff?
Through the chair, I believe, three years ago, the first ones were moved at CDNR.
And was that in response to suggestions from community activists?
I'm sure that it was a combination of the community and staff.
So would it be fair to say that many of the features of our current shelter system that have been helping us to respond to this crisis are as the result of the city taking seriously ideas from people who work with the homeless population or themselves have experienced homelessness?
Through the chair, we work very, very closely with the city, or sorry, with the community on all of these issues.
And that's been a benefit to our design of the shelter system and our ability to provide shelter to people who don't have secure housing?
Through the chair, we put a high value on that relationship and has led to very good policy decisions.
Thank you. The, could you give me a sense of, over, say, the last five years, what have, what has been happening in our shelter system in terms of the demand for it?
Through the chair, so the data set we have is fairly simple. When I look back to 2007, it appears that we fluctuate about 5% up and down at around 4,300 beds until 2015, and then we see a dramatic increase.
Dramatic increase. At the previous council meeting, we were discussing the addition, I think it was the previous one, it might have been two meetings ago, the addition of affordable housing units to the city's supply. And I made the point, and city staff acknowledged it, and I just wanted, but we didn't get it on the record, is it not the case, and I don't know who would answer this, that we are losing rental units at the bottom end of the market faster than we're building them? I think Mr. Gadden nodded his head when I asked that. Is there anyone from Planning or Housing who could address that? Chris, could you?
Through the chair, I'll attempt to provide an answer, certainly not my expertise. Anecdotally, I would say, you know, we're receiving quite a bit of pressure on the rooming house issue and the loss of the rooming houses and low-end of market, the availability of low-end-of-market space.
And given that there's no, that we're not supplying housing at the low end of the market as fast as it's being lost, is that a contributing factor to the demands on the shelter system?
Through the chair, I know there is a lot of work going on in terms of the affordable housing file and providing more units. I think it is a combination of vacancy and affordability, for sure.
And so that's contributing to the demands on the shelter system?
Through the chair, correct.
Okay. How often do we achieve the 90% number?
Through the chair, again, working on a really simple data set, as I look back over many, many, many years, I don't, not sure we've ever really achieved it.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Dusset.
Thank you very much. I just have a few questions. How many properties does the city actually own or have leased at this point in time, but we have not renovated yet, to be opened as shelters?
So that's a difficult, through you, Madam Speaker, that's a difficult question to answer, but what I can tell you is the process that we've been using over the past year to identify potential properties for these purposes. So we've been, again, focused on city-owned properties. We have about 2,000 that we're currently crawling through. We have identified 200 properties that are currently vacant. That's the first cut of analysis. Beyond that, there's potential in about 1,500 properties, co-location opportunities, and then beyond that, there's several opportunities where the city leases out space to community groups, so there could be potential opportunity there. Beyond that, we've undertaken efforts to go to market, looking at the lease opportunities for leased space, so lease-in space for these purposes, as well as acquisition of new properties.
But we do have some buildings either leased right now or about to be leased right now. Is that not correct, which are open in 2018?
Correct, correct. So we've been, again...
And how many beds would that add to our count? That's what I'm getting at. I don't care about the building, I'm more caring about the number of beds.
Through the chair, if you're speaking of the two, the two properties that we're working on renovating for 2018?
Yes.
Yes, so there would, correct. There would be 150 beds, and we're actively working on those renovations so that they'll be open in the middle of 2018.
Is there any way to expedite those, that construction and get them open earlier? Because we don't only look for shelter beds in winter, we also look for shelter beds in summer, and because I know at least one of these is going to be a 24-hour shelter, it's not a shelter where someone has to leave in the morning and come back in the evening. It'll be providing the services to help, this will be men, that leg up to get them out of the system. So is there any way to speed these up?
Through the chair, we've looked at all ways to speed it up, including increasing the number of days that the contractor is working. So the answer would be, there's not a way to speed it up, and they're both 24-hour shelters.
And I just want to confirm that that funding is actually in the 2018 budget? It's not something we have to put into the budget?
Through the chair, that is correct. They are fully funded.
Thank you very much, I saw my questions.
Counselor Fletcher. Thank you, thank you, Speaker. I just want to go over, and apologize for having my back directly to you, Mr. Rafferty, just to go over the issue of the federal government. And they do have, the armories technically does belong to the federal government, correct?
Through the chair, that's correct.
I just, Counselor Burnside had brought out some very good information there regarding the 15% increase in refugees that are looking for shelter in the city of Toronto. Did he get that? That was what I heard you tell him, I'm just corroborating that.
Through the chair, referring to the information, back in 2016, it was 10%. Today it's 25.
25, so there would be a 15% increase. And that, I believe he also got the information that there had been a reduction in actual dollars to the city dedicated to housing, to shelters and to housing refugees. Was that what I heard?
Through the chair, that would be true overall.
True overall, thank you.
In terms of our budget.
And so I'm just wondering, obviously, the armories is a federal building and is owned by the federal government. Do you have any idea how large that site is? Not the building, but the whole site?
Through the chair, I do not.
So there probably is about three or four acres, maybe three? I don't know, it'd be very interesting to know the actual size. And has your staff, or you've had a... And has your staff, or you've had a chance to look in to see just how many other federal buildings there are in the city of Toronto? Can you give me that information now?
No, I would say that our view of federal buildings was limited to the Armorys at Moss Park and Fort York.
So you haven't had a chance to review if there are federal buildings in other places? Like, certain, I know in the past, there's been post offices that they've sold, there's things that they're surplusing and selling. Where would that list be available, that you could find that out quickly, as far as what buildings are up for surplus that the federal government owns?
Through you, Madam Speaker, I think I'm correct in saying that we would be on, as the city, we would be on distribution for any surplus properties by the federal government. I do want to add, though, that we have had conversations ongoing with the province for a good part of this year, between the deputy city manager and the president of Real Estate at Infrastructure Ontario.
So if I was to ask to provide us a letter of the buildings that are up for surplus, or have been moved off to the corner, and then to surplus, from both the province and the federal government, you could provide that? We have our lists, we know exactly at what stage any of our properties are at, but I think we're unclear as to where their properties are at. Would I be right?
Yes, you would be correct. I, you know, despite specific conversations that we've been having with the province, but I could certainly request from the federal government and the provincial government through Infrastructure Ontario, a list of currently surplus properties.
I'm also just interested in all the properties that they currently own in the city of Toronto, not just the ones that are surplus.
I could certainly make that request.
Thank you very much. And would that be hard to get quickly?
I would hope not. The request isn't-
Perhaps the real estate should answer that question.
That's me. The request isn't difficult.
Oh, it's you, I thought it was Mr. Rafferty, sorry. I don't have eyes, I don't have eyes in the back of my head, yet.
So the request certainly isn't difficult. I would expect that the answer shouldn't be difficult either, and certainly, we have contacts with both the federal government and the provincial government.
So through the speaker, we do have senior contacts, and we will make that request.
For all the properties?
Yes.
So we can see what exists?
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Speaker. The significant increase in the use of the shelters, starting in 2015, is that as a result of the Syrian war?
Through the chair, we don't have any evidence that it is Syrian refugees who are in the shelter system. In fact, we do collect some of that information, and it's from a variety of places around the world.
Would it be fair to say that the uptick is a result of instability in other parts of the world, and these are people that the government of Canada has welcomed over the past few years?
Through the chair, I would say it's a result of instability, yes.
As Counselor Perks, or with him, I just want to make sure that I, that my recollection of numbers and information is accurate. What's the total cost of homelessness to the city of Toronto, say, 2017 or 2016? What do we spend on that?
Through the chair, I would have to get you a better precise number, but off the top of my head, from our budget focused on homelessness, I would think is around $180 million.
108 or 180?
180.
Okay, that's a lot of money. And I think it would surprise a lot of people, because so many people, when they talk to me about homeless, ask me why the city's ignoring it, but it would appear that we're not. To what degree does the federal government share those costs with us? Either directly funding us, or other organizations directly, or funding them through the province?
Through the chair, both provincial, excuse me, and federal governments provide some funding. HPS funding that comes from the federal government is approximately $20 million.
Has that changed over the years?
Through the chair, yes, it has gone up.
What was it previously?
Through the chair, it was 17 million.
Is there, is there anything in the policies, the proposed policies of the federal government that would indicate that they are willing to spend more money, or invest more money in this particular field in Toronto?
Through the chair, we do not have a defined number, but in the National Housing Strategy announcement, there was a suggestion around additional HPS funding.
How much extra money has the uptake in providing a shelter cost the city since 2015? In other words, at one point, it would fluctuate five up, five down, reasonably stable, then you get a sharp and sudden uptick. How much has that cost the city?
Through the chair, so, again, mental math is a little bit dangerous, so we can get you the exact number, but we have overspent our budget this year by $10.5 million. We've identified an $18 million pressure in 2018 related to that increase also, along with the motion that's before you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you. Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Speaker. I just want to clarify what I heard earlier in numbers. So in 2015, there were 4,280 beds, 2017, 5,651 beds, well, as of yesterday. Is that correct?
Through the speaker, that's correct.
And of the 5,600, how many are real beds versus motel rooms?
Through the chair, there's 1,300 motel rooms.
So there's 4,350 beds.
Through the chair, that's correct.
So between 2015 and 2017, if you subtract that, that's 71 new beds.
Through the chair-
That's all we've created in two years?
Through the chair, that's incorrect. The 4,200 beds that you're referring to, 370 of those at that time were hotel beds also.
So what's the difference, then? How many permanent new beds were created?
Through the chair, as we had identified earlier, it was between 3 and 400.
Okay, that doesn't add up for me, but I wanted to ask, the other thing that I'm struggling with is to understand what you recommended, and what is before us in the motion from Counselor Mahavik. I didn't see you recommending that we should be expanding the use of existing shelters. Did you recommend that?
Through the chair, staff were asked what the options were in the short term to identify new beds and spaces for people in the coming weeks and months, and one of the options is to do that.
Okay. So that's the part that I am really struggling with, because we know the shelters are already full. Are they already using, so the proposal is to use flex beds, or to just jam more people into those shelters?
Through the chair, so the proposal is to, we went forward with a space audit of all 62 shelter sites in the last number of months. The proposal is to take that space audit, to sit down with all of the providers, and identify any space, working within shelter standards, that would be available. The space audit identifies that there are additional capacity out there in some of the buildings, and certainly not all.
So what I heard is that they are using their full capacity, and are using mats on the floors already? Is that not the case, that many shelters are already using flex beds and mats on the floor? And I heard people were sleeping under desks, and that people were sleeping every, practically every square inch, and that-
Counselor Davis, your question, please.
Shelter standards were not being met. So tell me which shelters, if you've done the audit, which shelters can accommodate more?
So through the chair, that we do not have a final report on the space audit. We would not simply take the space audit as gospel, and say, put beds in these locations. It would require us to go out and work with the provider to make sure that there is proper space within those shelter standards to do that. We would not be cramming people in outside of those, of the space standards.
So you're saying the, you're going to be able to do this without creating overcrowding, and worsening the overcrowding that currently exists?
Through the chair, that is the proposal, and this is a short-term proposal, as we move forward to open new shelters, to create more spaces, so that we don't have people out on the street.
So will we be using more of these flex beds, mats on the floor? I heard that we're, they're asking to be allowed to use cots, and not mats on floors. I mean, are we, are we going to ensure that this is safe for everyone who is, is going to be added to these already crowded conditions?
That was your last question.
Through the chair, yes, we will make sure that it's safe.
Okay. I just want to remind members of council, some of the questions are being asked, have been asked previously and answered, so please do not repeat questions. Counselor Chisanti.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So you may have received some correspondence from a number of organizations, and they're suggesting that maybe that there are a need for 1,000 new shelter beds to meet the standard of 90 percent shelter occupancy. How would you respond to that?
Through the chair, we do not have that calculation. I think there's no question that additional shelter beds are required in the system, given the demand.
How did you arrive at the 400, then?
Through the chair, staff were asked to identify what short-term opportunities we could find to provide additional space and beds for people in the coming number of weeks.
And I guess you're comfortable in your analysis that the 400 would cover the need over this winter, or in the future?
Through the chair, we cannot predict what the future demand will be, but through the chair, this seems to be a reasonable response, following the opening of our five-winter respite sites.
Okay. And finally, are we right now at capacity? How many beds are available as we speak?
Through the chair, last night, we had 5,651 beds was the capacity, and 5,382 people were in those beds. So that was 95 percent capacity.
All right, thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Counselor Pala.
Thank you. I just want to follow up a little bit on trying to get to the 90 percent. So you clearly put forward these 400 spaces to get to the 90 percent. So if we don't get to the 90 percent, will you bring us back something, a new plan? I mean, you're mandated to get to the 90 percent.
Through the chair, as I look back, again, at a simple data set, we have been floating around 4,300 beds in terms of capacity since about 2007. The organization has not developed a multi-year strategy to increase that capacity with the growing population and other issues. It is difficult to predict if the 400 beds will change that occupancy, because we felt that adding the 1,400 beds in the last 12 or 14 months would have changed that occupancy rate, and it did not. So we would definitely come forward to council with a proposed multi-year strategy going forward in the future. It's one of my goals.
Do we have any idea of when it's coming? Because that is great, I think we really need to do the analysis of what's really happening and behind this dramatic increase since 2015, and how to go to the root of the problem, but when can we expect this plan to come through, this multi-year strategy?
Through the chair, two answers to that. We would be coming back with a full review of this winter in the second quarter of 2018. We've committed to doing that, we committed to doing that in July, when we had, when we were directed to open the five-winter respite sites. And we would also be bringing forward a multi-year plan to the 2019 budget.
Okay. And so we've had an increase of, according to the numbers you gave, 440 beds. Are you currently working on any, opening any new shelters that is going to create some net new beds to the system?
Through the chair, so in 2018, there will be five new shelters that will come online, that will increase the number of beds in our capacity.
So by the end of 2018, what would be the increase of net new beds since the 4,300 that we used to have before we started opening new beds?
So the capacity at the end of this year was targeted to be the mid-5,600, and going forward into 2018, we look to see that increase by 290 outside of the motion that you have before you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So that's it for the questions. Counselor Mahavik to speak. Oh, you must have just added your name on, because your name was not there a minute ago. Counselor Wong-Tam, questions?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. A question to staff regarding the number of hotel beds that are being used. 1,300 is the number that's being reported today, and with the proposal from Counselor Mahavik that we open up 400 additional new facilities, how many new, how many new additional hotel rooms will you be booking to get to that 400 number? Can you give me a combination?
Through the chair, we would be, we're targeting 200 motel beds.
So that means effectively 1,500 hotel beds will be introduced into this shelter system?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Out of the capacity sitting right now at 5,600?
Presumably, that number would go up also, but correct?
Yes. So it would just go up by additional 200, 400. On page 17, you itemized that there'll be 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, six new facilities opening up, correct? And for the upcoming year? This is Homes First, Salvation Army, Youth Link, City of Toronto, Birch Mount Residence, City of Toronto, Temporary Residence on Renne Mead, as well as EGAL, the six new facilities.
Through the chair, that's correct.
So you say that there's about 290 new beds coming online for 2018, correct?
Through the chair, there, so there will be, 241 of them will be new, 60 of them would be replacement.
So therefore, Homes First is new. Salvation Army is a replacement, because it's replacing 60 beds that used to be in existence?
Through the chair, I'm talking about the action, the net increase, the net increase over time. The reason that this, it's 241, is because Birch Mount is going from 60 to 100 beds.
60 to 100 beds, but essentially, I just want to make sure we're not double counting. So my question is- So my question is, these new facilities, how many of them are replacement beds?
Through the chair, and that's why I went back to looking at the, the previous data, the movement up and down of about 5% of the beds in and out. The shelter system has been dynamic over the years with some closing of facilities, some opening. And what we're seeing, though, in 2017 is breaking away from that 4,300 number and continuing to move up with the, with the addition of these facilities.
How can you ensure, considering the capacity in the, in the crowded shelters today and learning that we've, whenever you open up a new facility, they're instantly full, how do you ensure that we're not going to be overcrowding these new facilities?
Through the chair, it would be working with the actual providers, our community partners who operate the facilities, and working with the shelter standards that we have in place.
But the shelter standards speak to an occupancy of 90% that we, that you yourself have said we're not meeting and perhaps never have met. So how will this new body of work change that?
Through the chair, when I say working within the shelter standards, I wasn't referring to the 90%. That's correct. We, the city has never met, I don't believe, the 90%.
Is the 90% not part of-
I was talking about the, the space available.
Is the 90% not part of the shelter standard? Is it not a council mandated requirement?
Through the chair, it is a council mandated number.
So then how will you ensure that it won't be overcrowded, it won't be overburdened? You're only adding 241 beds in 2018?
Through the chair, as earlier, we, we would respond in this way, increase capacity, reevaluate, respond, increase capacity, come back to council, reevaluate. I think the, the long-term goal, from my perspective, is to get into a multi-year plan to address the growth in demand that's been generated from the growth in the city, the GTA, all of those things. The, no, no growth since 2007, I think, has gotten us to where we are, and we need to continue to grow over time.
Have you, have you created a reliance on hotel facilities and motel facilities? And is it sustainable in the long run?
Through the chair, in terms of utilization of hotels for this purpose is something that is done in many, many communities as a response. It's a, so in terms of a reliance, it's a great resource for us to be able to utilize until we can grow the system over time.
That was your last question. Thank you. To speak, Counselor Mehavik.
Yes, thank you very much. I have, you might say, a little motion that I would like to put on the table. Madam Speaker, I want to talk about the problem, I want to talk about the response, and then I want to give some thanks and expressions of gratitude. First, the problem. The problem that I think many people intimated in their questions is that we have a housing crisis in the city of Toronto. It is fueled by the rental vacancy rates, it's fueled by the working poor, it's fueled by the low OWO DSP rates, it's fueled by the high rent, it's fueled by rooming houses that are now being converted, it is fueled by refugees coming to this city from other lands, and of course, we, we welcome them. They are, they are our friends, and we, we welcome them. That's the crisis. And we've heard many times at CDNR with deputies coming, what that has meant on the ground. It has meant people sleeping in kitchens of shelters or respite care facilities, it has meant that people have slept in offices and stairwells, it has meant that many people in, out of the cold programs have had to just say, no more, there's absolutely no more room here. There is a crisis out there. That is the problem before us. Related to that is that we have not increased, even with all the, with all the ups and downs, we have not increased our shelter capacity since 2007. It has hovered around 4,200, 4,300, it has not increased. We have not kept up with the changing Toronto and the changing face of housing in our city. That's the problem. The problem is not the mayor, the problem is not OCAP, the problem is not this councillor or that councillor. Let's focus on the issue at hand and kind of be laser-focused on what needs to be done here. I find sometimes in these debates, there's a lot of finger-pointing, and if we can just laser-like focus on the problem, I think we'll be further ahead. So what's the response? Now I'm going to go through the motion. Let me say this, it is multi-pronged, there's a short-term piece, there's a medium-term piece, there's a longer-term piece. And I need people to know that I wrote the first draft. It went through several, several iterations, but I can say this, there was no compromise in the writing of this motion. Folks added value from staff, from the mayor's office, from other councillors, from the mayor himself. This is not a compromised document. Everything that was thought of, that could aid and bring us up to date with our shelter system, was included in this motion, and that's one of the reasons why it is so long. Just to go through it, motions 1 to 4, that's the original staff report, that adds, depending on how you count, respite hotels, it adds something like 300-plus respite in new shelters. It is a major dollar infusion into the existing shelter system. That's what the base was, starting with staff. Those are motions 1 to 4. Motions 5 to 9 come from a committee and the work that followed after that. It adds 400 respite motel shelter beds at a cost of $10.6 million. Staff are already looking at larger sites that are city-owned and controlled and that can accommodate a large group of people. Between those three strategies in numbers 5 to 9, we will go, we will get to 400. Number 10, it's looking at the longer-term piece. It takes a year to, year and a half to put in place a permanent shelter, 300 are being envisaged, we need a report back on what that costs, but those are also major dollars. Number 14, number 11 is referral center for families. We heard from the refugee of, community that we need a special referral center for families for perhaps obvious reasons when they need to be referred. Community mobilization is about 14. We cannot do this alone. We need the community in on it, and the mayor's been asked, and he's agreed to, the mayor will be calling a meeting of senior folks in church synagogue, business community, social service community, because they have to participate in solutions as well. Numbers 15 and 16 go to the feds. We need their money, we need their support, we need their action as well. I've spoken to Peter councillor, councillor, Minister Milchin's office this morning, as recently as this morning, and they are interested in going on this journey with us. Number 17, just to bring it to a conclusion, is it's about the lenses, it's about the interdisciplinary teams that need, that's the tough piece that we have yet to crack. We need to find a way to move people from shelters to transitional housing to housing, and that's what that motion tries to do. Sorry, I didn't have enough time to say my thanks to folks.
Yeah. Counselor Mehavik, you mentioned, just on the point, you mentioned 17. The copy that I have, there is no 17.
So, sorry, it's 16. Sorry, I was working off a previous-
All right. I thought maybe there was something I missed there. Counselor Wong Tam has a question for you, clarification?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Counselor Mehavik, at, at the CDR committee, there was a recommendation that 400 additional new spaces and beds, actually beds, be identified and opened before the end of this year. You voted yes to that motion, but I don't see that captured in your, your motion today. Why is that?
Well, I would, the way, there are many ways to count, and it depends sometimes on what you want in, what you want out. The staff report counts about 311 spaces. I actually moved the motion for 1,000 spaces. The motions number 5 to 9 add 400 respite beds in the three categories that I mentioned before. And motion number 10 adds 300 permanent shelter beds. So if you count 300 plus 400 plus 300, and I appreciate that some people count these things, don't count the respite beds, don't count the motel beds, but you know what? You can't, 300 permanent beds are coming, and all the other things, they do add up to 1,000.
So Counselor Mehavik, your, your accounting today says that your motion now has about 1,000 beds, and now you're counting respite mats and beds as permanent shelter beds? Is that what I'm hearing from you?
No, I'm not, I, I use my words carefully. Respite beds are different than shelter beds. Respite is, is basically saying, you know what, there are people that are out there on the cold today, right now. You can't just turn a switch on and build a shelter with shelter, with, with functioning beds and, and the support staff and so on. It takes a year to get that together. However, a respite, winter respite facility can take a few weeks and get it up and going. And that's why you need a very short, short, short-term strategy, and the motels are a short, short, short-term strategy, and the shelters are, frankly, they take a year to get going. So you have to have a combination of both of them to upgrade the system at this time.
Then Counselor Mehavik, my question to you will be the same one that I asked the staff. How do you ensure that you will not overcrowd existing overcrowded shelters? Part of this request is to go off and, and audit these shelters and find ways to put more beds in. Or in your, in this language is, is beds. So how do you ensure that you don't add to the problem? And are you creating a solution here?
That was your last question.
So the, the motion is, and I'm trying to look for it here, is that, is that when they, if they are looking at existing shelter spaces, the, in existing facilities, they are not to override the shelter criteria that have had a 10-year history of being developed. They are not to do that.
Thank you. Counselor Pasternak?
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Clarification of the motion?
Yeah, no, this is sort of the first I'm seeing this. So it's a little bit of a surprise, but number 13, this is a community engagement or this roundtable, is this, is this adhering to the new community, community engagement strategy, the so-called Bruce David, Davis recommendations?
Sorry, are you referring to motion number?
Number 13.
13, no. It is, you know, we've, we have had some trouble in the last year identifying even respite care facilities. And what this motion proposes to do is to say, is to ask the mayor, given the authority of his office, to call a meeting of everyone, anyone, and that's from developers, to social service agencies, to faith communities, calling them together and saying, we need your help in identifying locations, we need your help in solving this issue. That's what that one does. The next two, number 14 and 15, are addressed to the province and the feds.
Sorry, is that a yes, that we're, we're adopting, adopting council's directives on the new community engagement strategy for shelters?
Yeah, that's actually not in 13, but it's in number 1, 2, 3, or 4. But we are adopting them, yes.
All right. So on number 9, there's a reference to 400 beds. I was with the mayor on Sunday along with Counselor Crawford where we announced 400 beds. Is that the same, is that the same figure? Okay. And that's on top of the 291 already scheduled to open-
Correct.
-next year. Number 14, is this asking for the pooling funds to be restored, the 140 million that were cut about four and a half, five years ago?
Sorry, sorry, what number are you?
Number 14.
Counselor, request the province to introduce funding mechanisms to offset the sudden costs?
Yeah, are those the, I mean, you were here, about five years ago, the pooling, 140 million in pooling funds, which were used for various social housing and supportive housing strategies were cut. Are you asking for those to be restored?
Well, we're asking that, we're asking the province to participate in the, in the funding of this. This is a major capital investment. It's the largest single investment in affordable, sorry, in, in shelters in the last decade. And we need the province's support to make it happen.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kelly, three minutes, clarification of the motion?
Thank you, Speaker. In the report to us from committee, it says very clearly 1,000 extra beds. You've, in your recommended amendments, you describe, you use the number 400, and I think in your answers to previous questions, the balance of the, of the amendments imply an extra, how many, 300?
So motions 1 to 4 imply about 300. Motions number 5 to 9 apply, imply, not imply, specify 400. And motion number 10 implies 300 permanent shelter beds.
So altogether, 4, 3, and 3, is that correct?
Yes, 3, 4, and 3, yeah. 3, 4, and 3.
So your motion would add more beds than the, the report coming in from committee?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And that comes as a response to the, to the, to folks coming to us and saying exactly what people heard before and what our staff are saying, we're overcapacity by way too much.
The, I noticed that if your recommendations were accepted, you would delete the committee recommendations 8 through 14, is that correct?
Yes, they would be replaced by this. So the numbers 1 to 4 are essentially the staff report, and then 5 to 16 of this-
I understand that, I went, I went through both.
Yes, that's correct, that's correct.
In deleting, deleting over half of the recommendations from committee, what impact does that have on the, either the provision of shelter beds in the immediate future and the strategic planning for the addition of beds beyond 2018?
Well, I, I think what the, the committee's recommendations were broad and lacked, lacked a lot of details. What we did with that was we, we took that, those motions and said, okay, what does this mean? Verified some numbers from staff, verified that we could find a way to do this, and tries to put, put real flesh to, to the essence behind-
But no declaration of an emergency, is that correct?
No, there's no declaration of an emergency. As you heard, staff said that it doesn't value add.
And what's the implication for deleted recommendation number 12?
What does that read?
Yeah, what's the implication of deleting recommendation number 12 from committee?
What does number 12 say?
It's to reexamine 64 properties.
Okay, Counselor Kelly, that was, that was your last question. You're way over three minutes. I'm trying to move this agenda on, and please don't ask duplicate questions, please. Counselor Mamalidi, clarification of the motion?
Your motion speaks to more beds, but one in particular part of this motion I ask you about, and that's the amount of money that we're spending in our hotel and motel policy. We're currently, and this was verified by staff, by the way, just a few minutes ago, we are currently spending in our hotel and motel, $180 per room, okay, per person.
No, per two people.
And then, and then there's food, that includes the food per person as well. It's a, it's an average of 180 per night. That's $5,400 a month on one client, okay? That's, if you look at the amount of units that we're looking for right now with this report that's in front of us, and I think it's your motion, it's 1,400 units in hotels and motels. That's just, not, not our shelter system. So that amounts to $2 million a month that we're spending on just the hotel policy. Does it not make any more sense than to sit down immediately, as you've described, to talk to the private sector, the landlords that are out there, and say to them, we, we need you in this city? We can probably pay a- We can probably pay $1,000 a month, or $1,200 a month per apartment that's vacant in the city of Toronto, and stop this nonsense with the hotel rooms."
Have you finished your question?
I'd like you to answer.
Thank you. Motion number 16 tries to address that. I think all of us recognize that shelters are not the answer. They're a bandage that allows you to hold people's lives together while you put in place better answers, which is at the end of the day, housing, and for many folks, supportive housing. Number 16 tries to do that. Right now, the challenge at the time is to stabilize the homeless that are sleeping rough out there because there's no room in our shelter system. You do that. Then you move to number 16, and number 16 says, "Work with the lenses. Work with social service providers. Get some money from the feds as soon as possible into the system to provide supportive housing." And then you can move people from the shelter system over and hopefully shrink the amount of people in the motels as much as possible.
I've said this from day, from day in and day out, that there is no dignity in our shelters, none.
No.
We treat people like cattle, and we seem to be proud of it at times.
Okay, councillor Mamalidi, that's it. It's just three minutes, clarification of the motion. Councillor Holliday, next. Three minutes, clarification of the motion.
Thank you, Speaker. Motion part number 3 refers to attachment number 3 in the report. I'll note, attachment 3 contains the locations of six shelters and seven shelters that only say location TBD. And my question to the member is, what exactly are we authorizing here? Those six locations that are identified or seven more that we really don't know where they are or where they're going to be?
It's the six, six that have been identified or four, I can't remember. That's from the staff report, but that's, the staff have already been, the staff have already opened most of them frankly, they're respite centers.
Right, the list is here in front of me on my computer, but, so the seven that just say location TBD are out of scope then for bullet point number 3, is that correct? Like, we're not authorizing the opening of a shelter where we don't know where it is?
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not quite catching your question there.
Well, attachment number 3 lists 11 shelters, excuse me, 13 shelters. Six of them have an address, seven do not have an address, it just says location TBD.
Right.
Are we authorizing the opening of the locations that are TBD with this motion?
Today, no, not today, no, we're not.
So they're out of scope, so it's only the six where we understand where the addresses are that we're authorizing?
Yeah, I don't have the full thing in front of me, but that's what I suspect, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just want to remind members of council that when we, when you're asking questions on a motion that a councillor has moved, it's three minutes for questions, not for speeches. I just want to remind members of that. Councillor Carroll?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I appreciate that warning to be clear, and I apologize. Part of my clarification is walking in in the middle of your remarks. So I'm wondering if, I don't see a clause in here that ensures that we're not adding beds to full shelters, or adding mats under tables to full shelters. Is there, is there a caveat in here that that is not what you're endeavoring to do in creating all these new shelters and new emergency sites? That none of these beds will be accommodated by putting more beds into a full facility?
Yes, we, okay, so number 6 actually addresses that. City council directed general manager to audit all existing shelters to identify any and all available space that could accommodate additional beds within shelter standards, within shelter standards being a key word. There are some, staff have told us, told council just a few minutes ago, that they have an external party that's doing an audit, and you know what, most of them are crammed to the gills. We have like 52 or 62 shelter providers, they're crammed. Most of them will not have a space available. But some do. Some have an extra room here or have a mechanism to, that both honors the shelter occupancy standards that we spent a lot of time in previous councils developing. You could adhere to that and add some spaces. So that's a piece of that 400 strategy that staff are going to be pursuing if this motion carries.
And that can be done, is your understanding in drafting the motion, I assume with the help of staff, that that can be done in a matter of weeks?
Yes, yes, it can be done in a matter of weeks. And they have to, then the next motion says that they have to review contracts with some of those providers and so on, so there is some work to do. But, and we have given them a lot, and if I could use this opportunity to say, we have given them so much work to do here, and they have been kind of baptism by fire to frankly, frankly, to frankly fairly new senior directors, but they have bought into this and are going to work night and day to make this happen as quickly as possible.
And the shelter standard that you're quoting here is the service standard that appears in our policy, our books right now, not some global standard.
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for the questions. Councillor Mamalidi to speak.
Madam Speaker, one deals with the federal government and wanting them to pay the costs for all the refugees and the services that now municipalities.
Councillor Mamalidi, hold on, hold on. Can we put the motions on the screen, please? Councillor Mamalidi's motion?
She's running.
I put your time on hold. Councillor Mamalidi, I did put your time on hold.
Just one, okay, thank you.
Okay, so if you can read out the motion, they're on the screen.
So that's the first one.
Yeah.
The second one deals with to make every effort to find private landlords that want to be our partners. And the third, and that includes the Airbnbs, yes. And the third would be, we need to start counting our population and finding out where they're coming from, okay? Because I think a lot of them are coming from other municipalities. So I want to start off by saying that I don't need to stand up here and talk about how, and convince you about my stand on what we need to do with affordable housing in the city, our shelters and our systems. I wrote the policy, we still use it. We just, we just have some differences in terms of how to get to where we're going with this council. And I've got my ideas, and they do include the private sector, and we've always refused to deal with that. So I want to talk a little bit about that. But before I do that, I want to talk about the costs, because what councillor Mahavik always proposes is, when he talks about the standards in our shelter systems, it includes everything, right? So to get a landlord to agree to house people that need it immediately, we can do that tomorrow. But what councillor Mahavik wants to do is bring all the resources into that apartment building to help that one person. That becomes more expensive. And that's what this stuff does. So it costs us right now $5,400 a month per client, verified by staff. $5,400 a month per client. $2 million in total, that's just the hotel system that we have. Then when we talk about our shelter system, which in my opinion has no dignity, and we better move quickly to replace that, we're spending over almost $7 million per month, per month. That's almost $10 million per month right now with the temporary form of housing that we have in the city of Toronto. And this, this takes into account what we're about to do today. So it's new money, wrapped into new money every year, every time there's a crisis, and we just kept, keep spending the money. The federal government makes the policies, and I say this to my friend councillor Cressy, because we had this discussion the last time the refugees were coming into the city of Toronto, and we all voted in favor of that, and we moved the right motions that suggested the federal government help us with respect to everything we're trying to do today. You know how much dollars we got out of that? Nothing. Councillor Cressy, I said to you, we're going to have a crisis here, we're going to have an issue, they're going to be on our system, we don't have housing for them, and the city of Toronto is going to end up having to pay for them. What's happening today? Another expenditure. $10 million roughly a month that we're spending on this. So yes, we do need help. We cannot continue this on our own. So while we're all going to vote in favor of this because we do have a crisis, we better get our act together here. We better get our act together here because there are people without housing, there are people that need long-term housing and not to be treated like cattle, because that's what we're attempting to do. And you know why we're doing it? And this is where we disagree, okay? The left and the right are together on this, and I'll tell you that wholeheartedly. But the way this is being done, by moving motions that say they have to meet particular standards that we have already, is the most expensive package that you can give to this city right now, when we need immediate housing right now. So let's call the people that can give it to us, Mr. Mayor, and you're on the right track with this. You're going to have an emergency meeting, and it's with the landlords in this city. Now councillor Mahavik starts moving motions about bringing in churches and everybody else under the sun. At the end of the day, if they can house them immediately, then fine. But I'd venture to say they can't. And I'd venture to say that the landlords in the city, including Airbnbs, should become partners in dealing with this crisis that we've got right now. Or we can continue doing this every year and say, "We need more money, and we need to be, we need to be piling it on every year," so the 10 million becomes 20 million in no time, and the people are still looking for housing. And lastly, the federal government, yeah, it's great, you know, we're helping everybody else in the world. And we all stood up here, we voted in favor of it, but look at what it causes to cities when you do that. We don't have the resources to continue with the refugees that the federal government is saying to every municipality, "You got to take care of." We don't have that money. So let's, let's send that message as well yet again. But, you know, let's stop with this, we have to have unionized employees taking care of our homeless people.
Councillor?
And the costs associated to that.
Councillor Mamalidi?
Let's, let's you.
You're way, you're way over time. Thank you. Oh, we have a question for you. Councillor Kergianis, three minutes, clarification of the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I was wondering if we can put the motion about contacting the federal government back on the screen, please?
I'm not the one that does it.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, there you go.
So councillor, what you're asking is that we ask the federal government to give us money for the last three years? For the refugees that have come in?
I was the first one that stood in my place when this happened and said yes to the refugees, but also moved motions that were adopted by all of you that said the federal government needs to help us.
I have a specific question.
The answer is yes.
Okay.
And that includes the capital money required to build permanent housing for refugees that come into the, into the country.
So what you're suggesting is that we ask the federal government to project how many refugees will be coming in, and for them to sort of have housing that will look after them? Is this what we're looking for?
So we knew the amount of refugees they were looking at bringing in. We knew that at the end of the day, even though there was a year and a grace period that they needed to be sponsored, that in fact they would utilize our system, and not just about shelters, but our social system.
My question.
That's happening in my own ward in one of the hotels.
Councillor, what I'm asking for.
And yes, we.
To the chair, what I'm asking you for, my question is specific. You're asking us to ask the federal government to look at the amount of refugees that were coming in in order for them to project and build shelters for them, yes or no?
I want the federal government, when they suggest that refugees come into the country, to give the resources to the municipalities that only get eight cents on the dollar to take care of the refugees. We don't have it. I'm asking them to do that and to do it immediately.
Can you qualify where you got this eight cents on the dollar?
Okay, well, that's not part of the motion.
Well, he's.
Well, I know, but it's clarification of the motion.
Municipalities only get eight cents on every tax dollar that's collected to run their municipalities. Toronto's no different than anyone else. So every time, every time, every time the refugees, refugees or anyone else comes into a country and they settle in big cities like ours that have a better social net.
Councillor, that eight cent figure.
It costs us money.
That eight cents figure is not eight cents of the federal budget on immigration to look after the refugees.
Okay, we're way off topic here, thank you.
Your tax, your taxpayer sees it as his eight cents or her eight cents.
Thank you, thank you. Do you have another question?
Madam Speaker, I want to thank my colleague for giving us the numbers and the figures, but I don't think that he's able to substantiate and back them up. I think the numbers are a little off.
Well, this, that was not part of the motion.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, thank you. All right, next speaker, councillor Matlow.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to contribute a couple of thoughts to this debate. First of all, I think all of us, when we hear from residents asking us to do A, B, and C, we do our very best to be able to demonstrate why we can do something or why we can't do something, and if we can't do something, at least try to demonstrate thoughtfully why we couldn't do it. And I find that most people, reasonable people, accept that if you've given them a good explanation. So, you know, I'm hearing from staff that there are significant problems with opening up the armories. And I don't doubt that they believe that, and I don't doubt that they are looking for perhaps the lowest hanging fruit in city-owned properties or hotels or what have you, to be able to provide adequate shelter capacity. Where I, where questions are raised for me, though, is when we've been hearing from activists and service providers, people who are telling us that people are either dying on our streets or at threat of being in that situation, or living in deplorable conditions in our shelter system today. And one of their number one asks is, is get those armories open. Just get them open, get them open, get them open. And then when I ask staff, you know, what have we done to do that due diligence, to understand what we can or cannot do, the answer that I received was that they only reached out to them two days ago and it, I think it's just fair to say that if I were in their shoes, it wouldn't demonstrate to me that we've kind of arrived at a conclusive answer or we've perhaps taken their request as seriously as they believe it is, because it is a serious issue and it's a serious request. So what I'm asking staff to do, as they acknowledge that they would, is even if, even if they see obstacles ahead, the armories have been used in the, in the past, you are saying that they are still an option, albeit the challenges, and I've also heard that you will continue looking at that option. If they can be opened, then great, we need those spaces. If they cannot or should not be opened, at the very least be able to demonstrate to the community and to council that it's not just based on what you kind of see in front of you and, you know, two days of consideration, or reaching out to the Department of Defence, but actually in detail demonstrate exactly what those obstacles are and engage that conversation. Because there isn't trust, there's a broken trust on both sides perhaps, and we need to move forward together with the service providers, with the activists, with people whose heart and sweat are in this cause. There's another matter I wanted to raise within the discussion around capacity, which is that what I'm hearing from people on our streets, and in midtown Toronto, we've actually seen more and more people leaving the downtown core and coming up Young Street, and most particularly I've noticed around Young and St. Clair. And so I've sat with a number of these people and I've asked them, you know, how is it that you've arrived here? What are your needs? What are your, tell me your story. A consistent message I hear is that they don't feel safe in the shelters we have. I've spoken with young women who don't feel safe for their own person in some of our shelters downtown. I've heard that people are concerned about their property, that they're going to have things stolen. There's a number of restrictions that I've heard about, that people, whether they have a dog, they can only go to so many shelters, et cetera, and that dog is their family and they don't want to leave them. There's a number of reasons why I'm hearing that, along with the capacity challenge, it's also the conditions that our existing shelters are in that create unnecessary restrictions for these individuals. So I'm hoping that staff will both focus on expanding the capacity, along with, when we do hear specific requests from our community, from people who are working on the ground, that they're given more than just kind of a no, but no and or yes. that they're given more than just kind of a no, but no and or yes and, but not just, you know, that. And look at the conditions that we have today and try to improve them because from what I'm hearing from the very people who both work in them and also are staying in them, the conditions are deplorable. And councillor Leyden earlier referred to his daughter, I think about my daughter too, I think about any of our family members, and would you ever want anyone you love in these conditions?
Thank you.
And if you don't, maybe we can work together on improving them.
Thank you, councillor Matlow. Councillor Pasternak to speak.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. I have two motions. The first one is asking city council to request the deputy city manager, Clusturay, the general manager, shelter support and housing to explore funding program and strategic partner opportunities through a comprehensive document that I've had a chance to look through. It is important that we send a strong message that we're prepared to support people who are homeless and move them onto supportive housing, and this can only be done with an honest and open discussion with all levels of government about mental wellness. You can, you can go running to the federal government for money on the immigration side, and that's fine, but that will not solve the problem of our capacity issues in our self, shelter system. The second, second motion, we'd like the general manager, shelter support and housing, to report back to the Community Development and Recreation Committee on the referral system when those who are homeless show up at a shelter or a drop-in or respite and find it full. And we want to make sure that the system is working to be able to effectively move people to those shelters that do have capacity. I think it's important to remember that on any given night, you have somewhere in the vicinity of about 5,400 people who are looking for shelter. We have, in fact, a little over 5,600 spaces and beds in our system of various variety and gender and category. So on any given night, you've probably got about 250 beds that are empty, but capacity flow is the key to making sure that our system can accommodate all those in need. I think we can, we can pretty well conclude that homelessness is becoming the social challenge of our time. It's compounded by seismic shifts in society that are both tragic and unpredictable for both men and women of all ages. The 90% capacity guideline set by council is both unrealistic and anachronistic. There was no way to predict that the seismic change of millions of people on the move worldwide, flowing as immigrants and asylum seekers from world conflict zones, from depressed economies, coming through either the United States or across Europe and coming to, to our shores. And we have a great reputation of welcoming newcomers to our, to our city. But who could have predicted that we would be swamped in our system by a federal immigration policy that doesn't adequately fund municipalities to make sure that we can provide a soft landing for those who come to our shores? Who would have predicted that we have an erratic immigration and citizenship policy south of the border where asylum seekers are coming across the border to try and settle here? And our municipal neighbors in the GTA, they are letting us down as well. They are not, they are not pulling their weight as far as settlements is concerned, and there are enough stories around to hear of them encouraging and moving those who are homeless or new to our shores, those to Toronto, say, go to Toronto and they'll, they'll solve it there. On top of all of that, the perfect storm continues when we want to rebuild George Street, and I think we can all agree that to fix something, to make something better, you have to, you have to tear it down and then build it up new. And we're constantly seeking, or we're now seeking 800 replacement spaces there. If you don't have supports within our shelter system, our shelter system just becomes a long-term housing solution. And that, that will not, that's not sustainable financially, it's not sustainable socially. You must be able to work with various people who are homeless on the, on the mental wellness side, on the substance abuse side, and make sure that we give them the tools and the supports they need to move from our shelter system into supportive housing. And that is really the only practical solution to making sure that we have a regular, reasonable and respectful capacity of beds to, to make sure that we accommodate those, those in the greatest needs. I think that if we, if we approach each homeless person as an individual, as, as an important case that we can work on, that's the way to, to solve the problems that are before us. Because we can add tens of thousands of beds and everyone can have, everyone can have a shelter, a bed at night.
Okay, thank you.
But it would not solve the problem.
Oh, oh, you, you paused to have a drink. I thought you were finished.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, you have a question. Councillor Ainsley, three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm councillor Pasternak. I'm interested in motion B, where you talk about moving people that go to a shelter if it's at capacity, they're going to move it to another one. And my understanding from recently, I was at the Peter Street Shelter, and that they have a computerized system that, so if somebody goes to the Peter Street Shelter, which is not uncommon, and it's at capacity, which is also not uncommon, they have a computerized system, they look at the other shelters in the system, and more often than not, they give them a bus ticket and they send them to another shelter. So by this motion, are you looking at doing something different than what I understand is a system that works very well now?
We're, we're trying to find out why on any given night we have somewhere in the vicinity of 250 empty beds, but at the same time, people sleeping on the floor, on mats, under desks, and Peter Street is an example where, where people have brought me stories of people sitting in chairs all night or lying on the floor or under desks. This is something we don't want. So we're wondering why people in need are not being referred to vacant beds. And something's not working.
So are you saying this, the computerized system that we have now for moving people from at-capacity shelters to shelters that are somewhat under capacity because they said, told us on any given night the shelters are at 96% capacity? You're saying that that referral system's not working?
From, from what people tell me, as the Chair of Community Development and Recreation, they come to me with stories, homeless advocates and so forth, of people sleeping on floors, under desks, sitting in chairs all night, at the same time that we have somewhere in the vicinity of about 240 empty beds across our system. Something's not working, let's try and figure out why. That's why this motion's here.
Okay, and you don't think that's because the shelters are at capacity? That they're sleeping on cots and in beds and in the hallways?
Well, no, I mean, the, from the numbers we've been given by staff, you've got 5,400 people who need shelter every night, you've got a little over 5,600 spaces. Why, why am I hearing stories of people on floors, under desks, and sitting in chairs?
All right, thanks councillor.
Councillor Ainsley to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I do have a motion that I'm going to be, that I am moving, and it ties into, so asking the cities for immediate release through the city's open data portal, data collected. Sorry? Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. My apologies. Sorry, looking at the wrong motion. I will be supporting the recommendations that councillor.
I'm sorry, did you have a motion?
No, it's on another item.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I was looking at the wrong number.
Okay.
Yep. So I will be supporting the councillor Mahavix's motions. I, I do think that we have a severe issue with how we deal with the homelessness and people in our shelter system in, in the city of Toronto. And as a suburban councillor in the east end of Scarborough, when I talk, and we have hotels, I have a family residence in my ward, there's a women's shelter down the street, and, you know, more often than not now, I get calls from people that are, have been moved out of their home, they can't find space in a shelter, and a lot of the time it comes down to money. We have a waiting list in our public housing system of 140,000 people. And if you can't get, if you don't, can't afford rent, if you can't find a spot in TCHC, you're, and the rent is skyrocketing in the city of Toronto, you end up in a shelter. And there was some of the other complaints that I commonly get, more often than not, is about Ontario Works and Ontario Disability Support Program. And the fact that Ontario Disability Support, for example, it's a two, they get basic allowance and then they get a shelter allowance. Shelter allowance is capped by the province at $479. You can't find an apartment anywhere in the city of Toronto for $479, let alone a house or a two-bedroom apartment if you have more than one child. So we have a prosperity report that's coming up. I, I definitely think that we need to have Ontario Disability Support and Ontario Works, they need to be raised to reflect the market rate in the city of Toronto because it's the only way you're going to get people out of that catch-22 system if they're on Ontario Disability Support or Ontario Works, that they're going to be able to stay out of the shelter system. And the motels, and councillor Hart will talk to this as well, or he knows very well. Motels, that's not somewhere you want to be to raise a family or have kids on a short-term basis or even live on loan in a hotel room, let alone in a shelter system. I think that I'll be, I know I'll be supporting councillor Mahavix's motions, you know, we have a long way to go, we have a lot of work to do, there's some basic things that we can do, and I think that councillor Mahavix's motion start to address this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Burnside to speak.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm not disputing the need for immediate action. My concern is that all rule, all levels of government have a role to play, and we can't stop bringing this issue up with the other levels of government. I want to just give you some numbers as to what I think is the feds, are the feds and the province checking out? Two years ago, we saw the wonderful photo ops with our Prime Minister welcoming the Syrian refugees. We know from the questions here today, there's been little follow-up. So let's look at the numbers. Two years ago, refugees made up 10% of the, of the, of the beds. At that time, there were 4,300. That means 430 beds were used by refugees. Now, two years later, it's 25%. But it's 25% of a higher number. It's 25% of 5,650 beds, which is over 1,400 beds being used, a difference of 1,000 beds per night. That translates into $38 million per year. We need that money from the federal government. On the provincial side, we know that the pooling fund has ended. We heard that's $150 million per year. Some other caps and other, and what I would call trickery have cost us another 10 million. There's 160 million from the province that we're not getting. Add that to the feds, that's $200 million. What does that mean? Well, that would be a 7% property tax increase. But in terms of building affordable units at $400,000 per bed, that's 500 units per year. While we work to solve the current crisis, Madam Speaker, let's not forget that we can't do this alone. We're not asking for special treatment from the feds or the province, we're asking and we should be demanding equal treatment.
Councillor Fletcher. You're up next to speak. Councillor Fletcher to speak.
Thank you, thank you. Sorry, I was up in with staff in the Members' Lounge. I do have a motion that I'd like to place here, and I think everyone understands from my earlier questioning that, you know, we know where all of our properties are, all of our buildings are that we might be able to use temporarily for anything, and yet we don't have any idea outside of asking for the armories where any other buildings are that the federal or provincial government might own. That became clear, that our staff have been asked a number of times to open the armories, that that's a federal building, we're dealing with, the federal government feel that they have a responsibility to pony up and bring on-stream properties that they own to deal with the shelter crisis. But I think we should be really very well aware of what other buildings are available to us and where they are, just as we have that ability to look at our own properties. And I know when councillor Shiner spoke this morning, he talked about the work at Build Toronto and how we've brought many properties into fruition that, and used them for housing and built very, very interesting, fascinating projects where we've made lives better for people. Well, I think that we should be adding into that inventory the provincial properties and the federal ones. Not that we can add them in directly, they're not up to us to add in, but they're not in the public conversation. They're somewhere over there while we're having a conversation about what to do with people that are on their hard time, having a difficult time, sleeping on the street, nowhere to go, winter time, and somehow all we're really looking at or able to look at or ask for as councillor are our properties. So I think it would be very helpful because we are really the custodians of the shelter, of shelters in the city, and it's our responsibility, but technically it's the responsibility of every single level of government, of every single elected official. Why is it only here, us, that are so concerned and driving this issue, saying to the federal government, you have a very, very large facility in downtown Toronto that has a big padlock on it when it comes to people even sleeping on your grounds? How is that allowed to happen? And you know, if you don't think that's a suitable location, where is the other suitable location you are willing to offer up? Someone used to say, there's one taxpayer. There is. There's one set that's all public property. Every single inch, every single square foot of public property needs to be part of this consideration to what we're going to do during this crisis. And the fact is, we don't have that list right now. We don't know where that is. We don't know where to ask anything. The community doesn't know where else to ask. Maybe they have a list, I've not seen that list. Where is it? What can come on-stream in a crisis? Let's start driving a bigger agenda here with other levels of government that have to stand up and step up with the city of Toronto in looking out and protecting those who are homeless. This is on an emergency basis. We have a new shelter and housing guidelines where we're operating shelters, we're trying to get people out of the system, get them into a new life, get them things that they need. But every night, there are people who have nowhere to go in our system that need a very temporary spot. I don't see why we are having to push so hard on other levels of government to pony up property, to pony up that, pony up the armories, say, okay, we're giving it to you this winter, we're doing it. We understand that many people who've come into this city, many people that have come into this country have come here at our invitation, and we have a responsibility, city of Toronto, we're recognizing that, we're your partner. Here's what we're going to do. That hasn't happened, that has to happen. I want to see that list in January.
Good speech. And good motion.
Thank you, councillor Fletcher. Now, you do have questions, yes. Councillor Kerjianis, three minutes, clarification of the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Appreciate this. My question to my colleague is that we're asking.
I can't hear you, councillor.
We're asking the city manager to do a list of provincial and federally owned buildings. Shouldn't we also asking for us to have a, a list of our buildings that we can use?
Well, we have a list of all of our buildings, councillor. Real Estate Services has every building, and our city of Toronto shelter staff have access to that list. They know what that is, they're able to consider that. I heard them earlier say they're looking at everything. So what we're missing is the other levels of government.
I appreciate the fact that we're going to get the other levels of government to come on-stream, but I'm just wondering, in this, in this scheme of things, how would you go answer a, an individual that says, look, you're asking the federal government, the provincial government, why don't you guys open up the, the why don't you guys open up the community centers to allow the homeless to come in?" How would I answer them? Looking at this bill, how would I answer that constituent? How would you envision me answering that constituent?
I don't know who's asking that question. I know what question I'm asking. I know that our Real Estate Services, they know what's available, and we are very busily opening up as many venues as possible, but we have no idea. I'll give you an example. There are two post office properties that were surplus and not one bid on those properties, councillor. Why would we allow that to happen? So that is where I'm going.
Councillor, my question to you is this. In supporting your bill, that certainly I will, if I was to be asked a question by a constituent of mine, how would you suggest, how can you help me answer the constituent?
Thank you. Now I understand.
So the question is, councillor, you supported the bill by councillor Fletcher. Why was nothing in that motion regarding the city opening up its community centers?
Because I would say, what I would say to that constituent, and I do appreciate councillor that what you're asking me, is because I'm a city councillor and I can sit with Ms. Yoli or our real estate staff, I'm very clear what properties that the city owns and the number of buildings and what might be surplus and what might be available. What we're not clear on is what any of the other levels of government have available. So that's what I would say to them.
That's a good answer.
Thank you. Councillor Holliday, question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. So we'll get a list back of provincial and federal properties. Would you advocate then that staff should put aside the site approval process, because they may or may not fit? So in the case of the post offices that you just brought up, I don't know if they meet the criteria in the site selection process. Should staff sort of put that aside and say, "Look, let's take this opportunity, we have this selection process, but we're just going to not follow it"?
Thank you for that question. Certainly not trying to scuttle any process, but when I'm speaking about post offices that have been surplus, well, those are federal properties. They've been sold for condos. Where is the federal government looking at putting its property for a social purpose? And how are we even to be a part of that conversation? Because it's the city that delivers the social purpose. We are the delivery agent for both levels of government, for housing, for shelters. So let's be assured and know where those locations are and be on top of them councillor. That really is the goal of my motion. And of course, we are all very clear that the armories is a very important venue, it's available, it's downtown, and for some reason, they're not willing to put that out for our use.
So there's motions before us that advocate for money from the federal government. There's motions before us that advocate for money to deal with some of these pressures. Would you rather have the federal government give us, or the provincial government give us a property or give us money?
Well, I'd like to have both.
Both, of course.
And I don't think that's asking too much. I'd like both levels of government to feel the urgency of this situation that homeless people are facing in the city of Toronto, that our good staff are facing all of the time when they know they're turning people away, that the advocates here are so concerned about. I don't feel that there's an urgency from the other levels of government, and I think there needs to be. So I don't want to say either or, I'm going to say, let's bring them into this conversation in a very robust way.
Last question. Do you think that the real estate people are not aware of the surplus properties from the federal and provincial governments?
Well, I asked about surplus, and then I asked about others. And I know, I don't know what happened to the post office properties, but it was surplus, it went to a condo, there was no social purpose that was even envisioned at that moment, it was done by another agency. So when I'm looking at what's owned, I'm looking at all of the agencies of the federal government as well. Because I don't think anybody has put that together councillor.
Thank you. Councillor Carroll.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I understood your answer of clarification to councillor Karagianis first, that this really is filling a gap. We already have the city list, there are 100 sites that Mr Raftus is currently looking at, and we've been doing that since we started trying to fill the gap of George Street. I understood that answer. But as you've been giving the answers, I'm wondering now if you would consider it a friendly amendment. Ideally, we want sites that have buildings on them, but I'm wondering if you would consider it a friendly amendment to say, "Prepare a list of all provincially and federally owned buildings and properties."
Sure, that sounds like a great idea.
To make clear that if you have a site that can fit either the immediate need or the future need, that we would then in fact be driving them to do, just as we've done, which is to move away from the cold, "Can we get some money for condos, build Toronto agenda," to our new authority that says, "Let's build some social purpose into what we do with our properties." They should be thinking the same way. Is that your feeling with this motion?
You would like to add that there, I'd be happy to accept that. I don't know if we have friendly amendments. I will say that I know that finding sites for shelters is not as easy as it appears to be.
Exactly. Out of our 100 sites, we're having challenge.
And so there may be, we're asking others to help us. We're going to ask community leaders to help us, we're going to ask United Way to help us, we're going to ask activists to help us. Bring us those properties that you think can be used now and that can be developed over a period of time. There's two categories.
Right.
And now I'm adding into that the provincial and federal government. And I'd like to acknowledge that the province has put its land in the West Dawnlands in for housing, affordable housing, but also condos, but the notion that we should be looking for sites that would be usable and would be suitable for shelters has never come up yet, and that's why I'm placing this here councillor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Councillor Crissanti.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And councillor, a very good motion, and I'm going to fully support your motion. Great idea. Now, does your motion include buildings, only buildings that are vacant, or buildings that may have space, federal and provincial buildings that may have space available, or just vacant buildings?
No, it's buildings.
Just buildings? Any space that's available?
You know, we understand in the city of Toronto, we have so many buildings, because we have, all of the services are run from here. But the provincial and federal governments, they have certain buildings, but they're not running community centers, they're not keeping the lights on, they're not taking the water, they're not picking up the garbage. So we have so many, so many properties, I think we should be looking at what theirs are.
So all available buildings and space?
Yeah.
All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, before we recess, councillor Ainsley, you just want to make an announcement.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just wanted to acknowledge Jamila Agawi. Jamila, who's a second-year student at the University of Toronto, taking city studies and political science that's here on an external job shadowing program and is watching city council. And I want to wish her all the best in her studies.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll recess to 2 o'clock.